Scared you, didn't it?
Oh, I was waiting.
Good evening. City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Butler Barlow, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Let us pray. As we meet tonight in this final month of 2024, we take a moment to ask for blessings on the public servants and the government of the City of Suffolk, that we may do our work with a spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. Help us to use our authority to serve faithfully and to promote our common life together. We ask for blessings on the staff of this same city. Let them do their work in the spirit of service to the community with patience, respect, and care for all citizens. We ask for blessings on the citizens of Suffolk, that we, in times of conflict, engage one another without hatred or bitterness, that we listen for the voice of reason amid competing claims, and that we work together for mutual forbearance and respect. And finally, for blessings on the leaders of our Commonwealth and of our country, that they may inspire us to be at peace among ourselves, to reject all forms of violence, to remember that we may disagree without being disagreeable, and to be a blessing to all other nations of the earth. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of December the 4th, 2024, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712, as amended, is presented for council's consideration at this time. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Motion is in order with the pleasure of Council. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, ma'am.
Motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Williams?
Second, ma'am.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to approval of the minutes from the September 4th, 2024 work session and regular meeting, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Johnson?
Move to approve.
A motion for approval from Councilman Johnson. Councilmember Bennett?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Bennett. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no special presentations this evening. At this time, we will consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. Questions and requests for information on specific agenda items can be addressed during the consideration of the consent agenda after the agenda speakers, and a motion would be in order. Councilmember Johnson?
Move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
And a motion for approval from Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Rector?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Rector. Do I hear any discussion of the motion? If none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda speakers at this time?
No, Mayor Duman.
Will you please present the consent agenda items for consideration?
Item number seven, in ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality fiscal year 2025, Competitive Litter Prevention and Recycling Grant Award for the City of Suffolk Litter Prevention and Recycling Program. Item number eight, in ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality for the City of Suffolk Litter Prevention and Recycling Program and Extended Polyurethane Campaigns.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Member, members of council. In regards to item seven, the city has been awarded $3,000 from the FY25 Virginia Department of Environmental Quality Competitive Litter Prevention and Recycling Grant Program. The funds will be used to update, rebrand, and resupply the Suffolk Clean Communities Commission's Adopt Program for the Adopt a Street or Adopt a Spot Initiatives. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund budget by $3,000, and there is no local match. In regards to item eight, the city has been awarded $33,224, excuse me, $33,224.72 from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality Litter Prevention and Recycling Program and Extended Polystyrene Campaign. The funds will be used to partially fund a position within the Department of Public Works and to assist with public information campaigns. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund budget by the $33,224.72, and there is no local match.
Council, a motion will be appropriated at this time to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
A motion for approval from Councilmember Fawcett. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Councilmember Fawcett, thank you very much. Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no public hearings this evening. We have no ordinances, and we have no resolutions. We do have several staff reports. The first one is the Harborview Bridge Road interchange presentation. Mr. Manager, please prevent the overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, the Director of Public Works, Robert Lewis, will provide the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Just kind of continuing out along 17, we have been working for a while now on the Route 17, Shoulders Hill Road interchange project, and that is moving along. I wish I could tell you, everything was smooth sailing and no hiccups, but we are doing construction. So we certainly adapt and move along as we need to, and we are making progress on that. Right behind that, in the couple of years out, we have the next phase of that, which is going down 17 towards Harborview Boulevard in a pickup where the existing project is finishing up, going almost to Harborview Boulevard. And what we're looking at now is we're beginning to look at what does that intersection there, Harborview Boulevard and Bridge Road, need to look like? It is certainly extremely busy intersection, and it has a lot of impact in the flow of traffic in our area. So just as a little bit of history, back in 2020, which in today's world kind of seems like ancient history, but you remember in 2020, we were beginning into the throes of COVID. So things were starting to become much different than they had been prior to that. VDOT began a process that they call the Arterial Preservation Plan Study. And what they did is they looked at Route 17 from the I-664 interchange all the way across Suffolk, all the way across Isle of Wight to the James River Bridge. Because again, that is a very fast-growing corridor, and there's a lot of pressure on that. So they studied about 10 and a half miles of that. They engaged about, they were actually engaged about 2,500 citizens in conversation on that, and they received over 300 public comments. Now, what was interesting in this is, again, as I talk about how the fact that COVID was going on, it was extremely difficult at that point to have public meetings. So what VDOT did in that case is they actually engaged online. So they had a big website, and they reached out to communities and said, hey, here's this information, please share with us. But VDOT ran this program. They kind of ran it independently of Suffolk and Isle of Wight, which again, was a good thing. That way, we got good, honest feedback on that. But they looked at what were the existing conditions out there? What were the crash histories? What were the traffic volumes? And also, what was the forecast for this corridor moving forward? And this report actually was finalized in October of 2022, and we have not given a lot of attention since 2022 because we had so many other major construction projects that were ongoing at the time that we thought were more important than we were working forward. But anyway, bringing this back in front of you, VDOT actually through this, they looked at six different configurations of this intersection at Harborview and Bridge Road. Now, I'm going to talk tonight about that specific intersection, but again, every intersection in that corridor has a specific piece in there. They've got some information, they've got some recommendations. And again, we've looked at the other corridors in Suffolk on that report. And again, several of those, we've already done improvements. We've already done improvements at Bennett's pasture road in 17. We've already done improvements at Lee Farm Lane. We're getting ready to go construction at Crittenan Road and 17. So again, we felt this is the one spot we really need to concentrate on. So what they did is they analyzed and reviewed six configurations. And in the end, we kind of thought the best configuration was the last one. Each of you all had the opportunity to see this individually. We shared this with you, kind of got some feedback. And again, we, after that feedback, we went back to the consultant that VDOT engaged and said, hey, here's some feedback we've got individually from council. Let's see if we can make this concept even better. So what you see today is what we're calling our proposed tentative design for this. And again, this is kind of a big blow up, and I'm going to zero zoom in a little bit here for you. So what this is called, this is called a raised left turn intersection. The idea is, one of the issues we see up there a lot is we have a traffic signal there in that intersection, and we stop all movements of traffic continually all day long cycling to allow traffic to move. The point of this is the traffic that's on 17 that's wanting to flow back and forth through that with this will be unimpeded. That will be free flow the entire time. We will never stop that traffic as a part of that. And the way we do that is you build a raised structure in the middle of the road, and the left turn into and the left turn out of Harborview actually becomes up on a raised structure. So a single traffic signal up there that controls that, you go from about a six-phase traffic signal to a two-phase traffic signal, so it operates a lot more efficiently. So again, we worked with that and worked with a consultant and said, okay, we've looked at some things like, let's make sure we figure out how to handle all the traffic. We all know one of the biggest challenges is anybody that's coming, I guess it would be northbound on 17 from towards Shoulders Hill Road, I'm sorry, from towards Town Point Road. It comes under the bridge. A lot of that traffic wants to get over and get into Harborview, and you've got that big merge. At the same time, you've got a lot of traffic coming off of 164, and most of that predominantly seems to want to get left and go straight through down 17. So we've got that weave in there. One of the concepts of this is, in addition to this raised intersection, if you're coming under that bridge and you want to turn into Harborview, you'll still be able to get all the way over to the right and go in if you want to, but you'll also be able to stay to the left, come up on this raised structure, and then right turn into that again without any conflict, without any weaves. Likewise, if you're coming out of Harborview Boulevard and you want to go back to the east, you'll actually have two options. You can go, you go up on the intersection, you'll be able to turn left. And as you make that, you'll be able to make a choice. Do I want to drop down on 17 proper and go right on towards Churchland? Or do I want to drop down and hit the 164 on ramp and be able to get directly on the interstate and not have to go further up and make another left turn? So again, we think this is a very good option to handle traffic. What you see before you tonight is that of the VDOT website. It's one of what they call an innovative intersections. Now, what you see in this particular design, this is a four-way innovative intersection. We actually only have a three, kind of call it three and a half because of the way we're handling traffic. So again, if you drop that bottom piece off, but that's just a little graphic to help you understand how this may work. Has one of these ever been built? Well, actually, here's a similar intersection that's up at Rio Road in Charlottesville, Virginia. They kind of did the opposite. They had something that we don't have. They have a very low water table. So they had the opportunity there, rather than raise the intersection up, they took the through traffic and lowered it down and allowed it to go underneath this intersection. Same concept here, through traffic passes through unimpeded. Turning traffic again is up near the top where they had to deal with the traffic signaling going in and out of that. It actually, I've been through this a number of times. It works very well, very efficient. So what are our next steps? Certainly, we are sharing this with council tonight and citizens officially. And one of the things we hope to do in the new year is get out into the community and kind of do what we like to call a public showing and comment session, where we have an opportunity for the public to come out. And again, it's not an official public hearing because again, we don't have a full design yet, but it's to get reaction from the citizens. What do you like, what do you don't like? Maybe somebody sees something that we haven't seen yet that will make this work much better. Again, early 2025, sometime in the winter, we hope, we'll get out and get it to the community, show this to them, explain it to them, ask for input. We'll probably also have something on our website, an opportunity, if you can't come to the public meeting, to come out and offer us any feedback. And certainly, anytime our citizens have got a request, all they got to do is pick up the phone, give me a call. I'm happy to speak to them. Or again, we can meet them. If there's a community group that would like to hear something more about this and like us to come make a presentation, we're open to doing this. But the idea is to kind of start vetting this out as we move forward to deciding if this is the proper design and begin an early design process. And with that, I am certainly available for any questions that anyone on council may have about this early design.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Council, questions or comments? Councilman Fawcett?
Robert, this is a long time coming. This intersection has got to have some attention here in the very near future. The traffic load there is just crazy. One of the object problems that you also have there is when you're going northbound and you're trying to cross over Harborview Boulevard, you got that short run of a right-hand lane that everybody tries to get in and cut back into the traffic, and that creates a little bit of a problem there. It's a little road rage every once in a while there on that particular point. But part of this, I want to know too, the people up at Bernie Howe Manor has been trying to get that right turn into their neighborhood, and hopefully somewhere along the line, as we're doing Phase Two or Three, whatever we want to call this, we make sure that we integrate those folks with that right turn lane into their project there so that they don't have to manipulate that traffic and stop and make the right turn in. So I'm hoping that that'll help out. But something, if a concept, has got to happen at this location. This one you just showed, I seen this earlier, and this is pretty awesome. It can work, and it can really solve a lot of traffic problems, specifically, like you just said, coming off of 17 northbound, and you got the 164 traffic coming off. And everybody wants a hug and get over into the right lane, so you're playing Dodge cars to get over.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I do it on a weekly basis numerous times on 17. So, you know, we've got some good progress here going with the Shoulders Hill Road one. I know there's some pains there, but they're moving along, and they're doing okay. But we've got to do something as we can come down further and tie in and get that intersection squared away so those folks can travel unimpeded because Harborview is just getting busier and busier and busier. And it's not over yet, what's going in there. So there's going to be more traffic in the future in that location. So good idea. I'd like to see how it turns out. I'll be watching for it, and I'll certainly be at the public events when you have them to get my input into it. So thank you very much, and I appreciate your presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilman Fawcett. Just for your information, the Bernheim Manor intersection is actually in part of Phase Two. So that's the one that's already queued up moving forward.
Vice Mayor, word?
That was a sense, that was my concern also. When you said Phase Two, how many, in time, how many, year, two, five years? How long is it going to take?
It is in the CIP. Vice Mayor, Ralph taught me that. I can't remember whether it's like three years ago or four years ago, but it is queued up in the CIP moving forward.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Bennett?
Robert, on the Bridge Road and 664, the red line where it shows going into Harborview, is that going to be improved there? Because that's a bad spot coming in there by the cemetery where it all merges in going into Harborview. Is that red line is saying another lane is going in there?
No, sir. That red line is actually signifying either the existing right-of-way or, on the case, to the left-hand side, the proposed right-of-way that would be necessary to make all of this happen. Our goal in this is to minimize, if not eliminate, the need to acquire any right-of-way, and we certainly recognize that there is a historic cemetery there, and we will not impact that cemetery.
All right. Is that the reason that the merging in all those lanes right there at 664 and 17, that's the reason why it comes in? And then you got to try to get over to get into Harborview?
I certainly was not a part of the design process when that was done by VDOT, but my guess is they tried very, very hard to make sure that they did not impact the cemetery. So there's probably some, some design exceptions that were made in there, limiting some merge areas and so forth, trying to make sure they did not touch those historic properties.
Right. I understand the cemetery, right.
And again, we're going to continue to honor that. We are certainly going to not touch those properties at all.
Right. I understand. I understand. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Council, any other questions or comments? If not, Mr. Lewis, it's a rather exciting design. I don't think I've ever seen a left lane fly over, but there's, doesn't that create an issue with right-of-way acquisition on the other side, or not so much?
Again, the only real right-of-way acquisition we're anticipating at this point is you can kind of see that where it says Harborview Boulevard, that triangle. There is a corner there that we will have to acquire that's undeveloped property, but everything else remains inside the existing right-of-way. And if you all remember some of the other concepts I showed you, many of those had much more impactful designs in them where we were going to have to acquire properties and change limited access lines and all kinds of things. So the really good thing about this design, it does what we needed to do. It stays generally inside of that existing right-of-way line and limited access line, which hopefully helps keep us within conformance of state of the Commonwealth Transportation Board. And again, that one property there that we would need to do some acquisition of, it's, got you, unencumbered at this point.
It's a very interesting concept, the idea of having to fly over and the traffic basically not having to stop at all and reducing those light cycles is, I mean, other than putting in additional lanes, I mean, this really is probably a lot more bang for the buck, if you will.
And actually, when you put additional lanes in, you actually lose more time on your traffic signals because you've got greater distances to clear people out of, and they actually become less efficient by doing that. Anytime you can reduce the conflict points, you make it safer and faster and more efficient.
Yeah. I can't wait to just get down to one thing.
Money.
Show me the money. All right, thanks, Robert.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll move to our next staff report, which is a Suffolk Shelter Program update. Mr. Manager, please present an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This presentation will be provided in three parts. Director of Capitol Projects, Gary Jones, will provide an update on the ongoing renovations of the Suffolk Shelter. Deputy City Manager, Aziz Felder, will touch on the city's current shelter programming, inclusive of the city's winter sheltering, who will be followed by Ms. Mary Sue Ross with the Coalition Against Poverty, who will update the City Council on Cap's winter program. Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Members of Council. This evening, I'll provide you a very brief update on the status of construction of the new shelter we're doing out on Pooton Boulevard. As you know, back in January of this year, we purchased the former Regal Motel, which lends itself perfectly in its configuration to a homeless shelter. We purchased it with funding we received from HUD, a $1.4 million grant that we used for the acquisition as well as for some of the initial construction we're doing. The property itself is a two-story, just over 7,000-square facility, as I mentioned, located on Pooton Boulevard, and it sits on just under an acre of land. This rendering shows what we are planning to make this, turn this thing into a nice little jewel here versus what you see today, which is not a little jewel. The plan is complete interior and exterior renovations. As you can see in that rendering, it gets a whole new facelift with new windows, new landscaping, new security fencing, a new paint job. We plan to create 15 double occupancy rooms with all new bathrooms, new fixtures with new showers, new lighting, new flooring. Fifty percent of the new rooms will be ADA accessible, which will all take place on the first floor. We decided that we would do that because so many of the folks that come in with, with needs for a homeless shelter, some of them have many physical needs. So we decided to go ahead and convert all of them on the first floor to ADA-accessible showers and restrooms. There's also going to be a new eight-foot-high decorative security fencing, very similar to what you see here at City Hall, to accommodate the needs of the site as well as providing automated vehicular access into the site, which will be controlled by the project manager on site. We'll also be doing new landscaping and lighting for the entire site. Talk about some of the changes we're going to be making to the interior to accommodate the needs of the program. The drawing you see to the left is existing layout. It was the, when you go in, when you first go into the old motel to the left, closest to Pooton Boulevard, that was the registration area, and it also was the apartment for the on-site manager. We're going to take that and convert it into the office space, the reception area, as well as some of the support space for the program. If you look at the drawing to the right, the very left of that drawing, at the bottom-left corner, that's the reception area where patrons will come into the shelter, sign in, get all the paperwork they need to get taken care of. There's the program manager's office is immediate adjacent to that. And then to the right there, you'll see a community room. We're converting the old living room of the apartment to a community room where patrons can use for, for meeting, watching television, having some of their meals. There's also an ADA restroom we'll be doing there right off the community room, as well as modifying the kitchen to provide support to some of the needs they'll have for the shelter. Now, they won't be doing any heavy cooking here, but they'll be able to warm up things with microwave, toaster ovens, those kind of things, and provide the necessary seating they need to have their meals. And speaking of other renovations, a typical room. What you see to the left of what is what's there now, a typical hotel room, which is a very small bathroom with an old tub there. Keep in mind, this building was built in 1987, so obviously, all of those fixtures, sinks, toilets, bathrooms, all that stuff has to come out of there. It's nearly 40 years old. So we're pulling all that out, and as you see on the right, we're going to be expanding the restrooms to be ADA-accessible with the proper turnaround space, handicap showers as well as grab bars, handicap sinks, and all the things to meet the needs of those people. We'll also be providing storage space for them to store their belongings. As I mentioned, we started construction. We started construction about three months ago. We'll be, cost construction for the total build-out, which includes furniture, fixtures... Will be, cost construction for this total buildout, which includes furniture, fixtures, equipment, would be approximately $1.7 million. And the reason I say approximately $1.7 million is because as you go into a facility like this and you start uncovering things, there's a lot of things you're going to be fixing that you hadn't anticipated, which we are doing as we speak. So, but we'll, we'll be somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.7 by the time we finish. Construction schedule will be completed, obviously, early summer of 2025. Mr. Felder?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, distinguished members of council, Mr. Manager. Mr. Jones provided you with a physical update of the shelter, the brick and mortar. I'm here to talk this evening more about the human services side, which is a science in and of itself. And when our team visited some of our neighboring localities to see how their shelters were operating and running, we were able to glean from their experiences, you know, the good, the bad and the not so good, from their experiences. And one thing that they advised us is that we would do well to hire a consultant, an expert in homeless services. So we put out an RFP and we have selected Carson Dean Consulting. Carson Dean has 25 years of experience in homeless services, both in the public and the private sector. He has successfully led the two largest emergency shelters in the state of North Carolina, the South Wilmington Street Center in Raleigh and the Men's Shelter of Charlotte now called Roof Above, which is the largest shelter in the state of North Carolina. And what actually happened with that, he was able to oversee the merger of their emergency winter shelter with the Men's Shelter. And now it's become Roof Above, which is the largest shelter. So he has a lot of experience and he's very passionate about non-congregate shelters, the hotel-style shelters that we see. Studies have shown that 46% of those that are unhoused and they go through non-congregate care shelters, when it comes to positive outcomes, when it becomes, pertains to safety, well-being, and their ability to transition into permanent housing, studies have shown that non-congregate care shelters operate better to promote them to a better living And some of the deliverables that we will get from him is input on shelter design. He actually came up from North Carolina in October, took a tour of the site, gave some good input and insight about how to deal with the unhoused and some of their humanistic needs. They're not just people you just put in a place and close the door and you just stay. You know, they have needs, they, they're in need of different services, wraparound services and things of that nature. He's also going to help us develop our best practices, operational model, which is important because when we get a vendor to operate the shelter, it's very important that their values align with our values. And of course, explore funding strategies and to make sure we are in compliance with all the regulatory factors that lie therein. Suffolk Winter Shelter Programs, the city currently put out, well, previously put out an RFP to get a vendor for the winter shelter program and we're currently in the final, we're finalizing the process of selecting a vendor to run a winter shelter from late December to March or April, depending on the funds, how long they would last with, you know, the needs that will occur. We know it's cold outside and this is a need. And that leads me to Coalition Against Poverty in Suffolk, known as CAPS. I'm going to introduce Mary Sue Rawls. She's going to come up and discuss to us about what exciting things CAPS, the CAPS program is doing. Mary Sue Rawls.
Thank you so much for asking me to come, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and City Representatives. I am Mary Sue Rawls. I'm the outgoing director of CAPS. I am retiring at the end of the year. Tonight, we have with us our staff, Jan Pruden and Deondra Parks, and our new executive director, Sharon Holland, and our, one of our wonderful volunteers, Carla Sanchez, who has worked in our shelter programs ever since we've had them. First of all, let me explain that since the pandemic and the loss of a staff person that was dedicated to the shelter program, CAPS has struggled to recruit churches to host these guests in their buildings. CAPS has consisted for years since 2012 of one to three part-time employees in our office, which is open only three days a week, to assess clients in crisis and try to stabilize their housing with emergency relief funds so that they will not be without a home. This is what we do all year. That's our primary function and we field over 200 calls a month for some type of assistance. But because we're a coalition of churches, we totally depend on our area churches to provide shelter for those experiencing homelessness. CAPS can prepare the churches, training them in the best practices and the processes for a safe week of hosting, but the bulk of the program and the success of it lies with the churches and their many volunteers that welcome the guests, provide a safe place for them to spend the night, feeding them and building relationships with them. We've changed the name of our program to the Church Night Shelter Program to better reflect the emphasis on those who actually are putting in the work. At one point, we had more than 10 participating churches and our program stretched to 12 weeks. We certainly hope that the church shelter program grows again because no one program nor one city shelter can address all of these complex issues that contribute to homelessness. This year, we have five churches that have committed to hosting for a week, but none are within walking distance of downtown. Fortunately, Crosspoint Church provides transportation to these locations, but without the support relying on the city's transit system, we would incur a $3,500 a week expense, transportation expense to outside of the downtown area and it would severely affect the program's sustainability. Another concern with the churches hosting guests is ensuring accessibility for individuals with mobility challenges or mental health issues. For those with physical disabilities, there's a need to provide easy access such as ramps, elevators and designated seating areas. Persons with mobility issues may also have difficulty sleeping on a blow-up mattress, which is what we use. We realize that the city has contracted services over the past few years to help house some of our neighbors experiencing homelessness and CAPS really appreciates that. However, there is more involved here than providing a roof and food. A successful program has individuals who work with participants in their program to connect them to services that they need that are provided by partners in the community. The City of Suffolk has many caring partners that participate in the Hampton Roads Continuum of Care to make sure that anyone in their respective programs is presented for much-needed services through government and non-government resources to move them to a much more stable environment and a stable future. Last year, we were not able to have this church program and it disappointed us greatly and it was a little bit late when we realized we weren't going to be able to do that. So we thought, what can we do? So we quickly got together a program that we call the CAPS Community Kitchen. We fed people in a downtown church or a building. One of our newest partners, the Masonic Lodge, has taken us under their wing, provided us with their building on an ongoing basis. And the first night that we did this, we had three guests to come. Two weeks ago, it was 50. We have people that have need for not only food, but these people that come to be fed want to know when the shelter is starting. So relationship is extremely important to a lot of our people, our neighbors in Suffolk. We want to encourage the city in their efforts and we want to request that the city's careful in selecting managers of its programs who can partner together to serve our citizens experiencing homelessness. No one organization can handle all the many individual needs of those needing stabilization. We all need to work together for a solution that makes our city a model in Hampton Roads of public and private partnerships that make a difference. Thanks for letting me come.
Thank you.
Myself and our staff are available for any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Are we done? Thank you so much. Appreciate it. I'm sorry, we got one. Councilmember Fawcett?
Thank you, Gary and Aziz for the, for the presentation. It, it's really, the building's coming along great. I mean, I can tell you that I was excited to be a part of this council that approved the opportunity to get that building because there's no more humanitarian need than what we're doing in this city to get this shelter up and running, to help somebody that is in need out there. If you don't think so, you should wake up in the morning at six, seven o'clock in the last few days and it's 26 degrees, 30 degrees outside and think for a moment, just think for one moment, the human being, regardless of who they are, is out there, has no place to go. In some cases, and I got to give my hat off to CAPS, they've been a big player in this process in our city, there's no question about it, to be able to put together and, and feed or help feed somebody. I think this is going to take us a long way when this building is complete because I know we're going to do it right out of the gate the first time. We've got the right people doing it, the staff here is the right people doing it. We've got the consultant involved in it and we'll have a manager there that'll oversee the process so that people will have equal equitable opportunity to go into a safe environment and be able to get in, out of the weather, maybe enjoy a few days of relaxation where they normally wouldn't and maybe be able to eat and be able to feel like they're part of the society that they feel has left them. This goes for everybody, including vets that are, that are out there that are not even being taken care of. And that's, that's a big fallacy of this country. But anyway, to, to put it in perspective, I, I just, I'm so glad that we're doing this. I want you to keep the pedal to the metal to get this thing done so that we can get going and get people in it. And, you know, hopefully, and I encourage anybody, if you see a homeless person in the street in this weather and you can go around the corner to someplace and get something hot and drive back around there and hand it to them, you'd be surprised. That would be a graceful thing to do for anybody. So again, I'm proud of being a part of this council that had anything to do with this shelter and I look forward to seeing it up and running. I hope that I'll get a call and maybe when it gets going, get a chance to take a look at the end result because this is nothing more than a great thing for us. Thank you for everything y'all are doing, also for CAPS and everything y'all have done and continue to do. And thanks to the Mason Lodge, which I am a part of, that opened their doors to allow you to bring people in, to give them a hot meal and help them a little bit. So I appreciate all of you for doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
A couple of questions, just to clarify for me a little bit. Gary, thank you. The shelter's looking good. This is simple. I'm not going to ask you a lot of questions, but we originally got a million five, we had to buy the building with that and that and the other. What is the, the stream of money coming in? Are we going after continual grants or is there a federal program that we're signing up for to, when we start in July, to actually implement this? Where's the funding coming from?
Well, we've used a little bit of, of course, we purchased with some of the grant funding. We use some of that also for some of the renovations. We also have some CIP funding, local dollars that are going towards this.
So we're going to commit every year to, of course, because it's not a cheap spending.
There'll be a part of our operating budget will, but we'll be chasing grants also.
Cool. That's what, that's what I wanted to hear because that's a good thing. My immediate concern though, to be honest with you, thank you, Gary. Z, your turn. I just want to ask a question or two. Are we actually working with CAPS now to help them fund? I tell you, the last few nights when I get in the bed at night and I think about this program, I'm concerned because it is no time for a mother and two children to be on the street or are we able to help them with funding for the rooms, for hotel rooms? And how does that work? Explain it to me.
During the budget process, we have several nonprofits that apply for extra funds and CAPS has, has been one of the recipients of those funds.
Okay, but we're able to help them to the extent that if they get desperate and we have a two-degree night, we, the money can come from somewhere, right? You hope, right?
I don't, I don't know if I'm.
I don't want to put you on the spot. I'm just, my concern is that I just.
Answer that particular question.
Right. I just want to make sure that we're able to help the, with the rooms and things because you know, last year we did the same thing, correct?
Oh, last year we had, we had our program going also.
Right.
Similar to this year, along with, unfortunately, CAPS and the churches are working again this year, but obviously if we have a special funding request, we'd bring it back to you for consideration.
Okay, but, but once we get the manager, we'll have a manager over the facility once we get it really going and that's what we're using the consultants for, correct?
Right.
To help us put that in place and then we really won't, we will abuse them and we'll have our own team in place. Is that how it works?
Right.
I'm just trying to clarify in my head how the system works so we all can be a part of it.
We will have the, we will have the shelter up and running. We will put out an RFP for a vendor to operate the shelter.
Right.
And we, of course, we will have someone in the city to monitor and manage.
Right.
To make sure that's, that's operating correctly. And also in addition to CAPS, we're also in the, in the process of finalizing another vendor for a winter shelter program in addition.
Okay, great.
So the more, the merrier because the help is needed.
The help is needed. That's right. And I, I appreciate that. And that, that's my concern to see this ongoing, going forward and we're able to provide help for these people that are giving of their time and the churches and things so freely and the public should be aware that they can help as well.
Right.
If, if there's a true need. I don't think anybody wants anybody sleeping on the street at night.
Exactly.
So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bennett?
Thank you. Just a few comments to CAP. Thank you very much for your presentation and I heard a lot their needs and which Councilman Johnson just asked, answered, asked, got to ask a question and I answered that I was thinking about, how can we further help CAP in the service and the amount of money that they're needed? And that is something, I don't know what the, I'd have to look at the budget because I don't have the budget figure in my head. Remember how much we had, Mr. Manager?
No, I was actually looking for some, a call in there in the back room for me too, but.
While you find that, I was just going to say if this, this is going to be a rough one from the weather forecast look like, and I don't know what the amount might be, but maybe we might need to.
Charles, Charles has what we may have.
Yeah, there's $35,000 approved in the current year budget for the CAPS program. So we've been funding them on a quarterly basis so far this year. We'll have another local nonprofit application has gone out and we'll be accepting those through right before Christmas and then hopefully preparing to include in the operating budget going forward.
Okay, so they can come back and apply for some additional funds.
Right. Yeah, that's part of the, the operating budget development is local organizations that provide services to Suffolk citizens and CAPS has certainly applied for those in the past.
Okay. Because I, I know riding around early in the morning and late afternoon, you see a lot of people look like it's really in need and it, as Councilman Fawcett said, it breaks your heart when you see people at this time of year, because it is, with nowhere to go and trying to make it. The other thing that sort of concerned me, maybe this was because of COVID, had only five churches now participating where you had 10 before, so you think that's because of COVID? Okay. So maybe we need to talk some more with some of the churches and try to get them involved more after COVID is not over, but has slowed down a little bit. But I hear you if I say it like that. Y'all in my prayers. So we'll see what we can do. Thank you, sir.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Aziz, I want to ask you a question. Some of the things I might, you might have said it, but I want to ask this. When you used to talk about homeless shelter, you talking about family, men, women, what? We talking, what type of home shelter?
Adults, for adults. Four kids handles. Adults, for adults, for kids, handles, fam, you know, families.
There's not any shelters for children.
What'd he say?
The four kids, the four kids organization, they deal with children and families, and you have the Geneva Shelter that deals with victims of sex trafficking and abuse, things of that nature, but there's no single adult, or, you know, adult shelter in Suffolk male, for male or female.
So it's mostly for families, yeah?
Families or victims of abuse.
Victims of abuse. Okay, so, I just got a concern with, I too see a lot of people outside, so how will you, are we having any intention of addressing that later on, or what?
Well, like I said, we, we also are down to picking a vendor for a winter shelter program, from December, late December through March or April, depending on the availability of funds, so that's something that we've been doing for the last several years as well.
Okay, now, I'm, I'm just gonna get a little deeper, is when you have individuals who's out there like that, and they have a medical problem, what do we do then?
They're not discriminated against.
Excuse me?
They can be seen, they can be helped as well.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes, um, I guess someone from CAPS, or Gary, or Aziz, maybe, Aziz, come back up, please. The, um, question that I have is, I know that you mentioned churches not, or CAPS mentioned the churches not being involved as much since COVID. Well, if you're not a church, you're not a nonprofit organization, however, you're a business owner who just happen to have a rental facility that can be used for that purpose. How does that organization apply and be a part of what the organizations are doing? As for as sleepovers, or having someone come in?
Well, I think that would be a question for CAPS.
So, um, Mr. Williams, I'm not positive that I understand your question. I will say that, um, if, if CAPS itself, even with the $35,000, which we really try to tuck away for anything to do with shelter, although we sometimes use it for emergency relief, if we were to start housing people in hotels on an emergency basis, our entire budget for the year is 202,000. We'd go broke in a heartbeat. The city's been very good to us by giving us this local funding money, and last year we were eligible to apply for some of the remaining ARP money, and that has helped us a lot this year. But, just to, um, basically tell you that we get calls every day with moms and kids in cars, and Four Kids has a long waiting list, they try to help, but they're, because they don't actually have a shelter in Suffolk, their, their major goal would be to find affordable housing and get them into that ha, a house. So, they would help them for several months, and then hopefully they are stabilized by then and can handle things on their own. It's just, there's a, there's almost, for almost every individual, there's a different story, a different way it's handled, the, the problems are very complex, so it's, it's hard to, one side is never gonna fit all.
Okay. Maybe, um, I didn't ask the question, I, I'm not talking about financially, I'm talking about if a private entity has a place where they can haul someone overnight, how can one be a part of the program? We're not talking about any financial services, we're just talking about allowing you to utilize their space for someone to stay overnight and get them off the street, is what I'm asking.
Councilman Williams, if I could maybe take a shot at part of this question. One thing, if we're talking about a specific building, we gotta make sure the zoning's right, we gotta make sure all the health and safety features are right in the building, so we would have to actually from, and just not having a boarding house anywhere we could have, and I, I'm using that term loosely, and I wanna make sure that we understand we've also got ordinances and stuff like that, we'd have to look at prior to just going carte blanche on, on something. So, I, I, obviously needs there, but there's other things we would have to address, too.
Yeah, we're very careful in our vetting. It's, I mean, people would love to take people in their home occasionally, but we just, it's not best practice, it's, it's, it can be dangerous, and it can be, it can create a dependency, and so what our goal is at CAPS is to not create dependencies, we want to move people up, not keep them where they are. So, I, I know that's not a, a very good answer to your question, and I'm sorry about that, it's just never come up that I'm aware, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Rector.
Thank you. And I, I guess one of the other issues with, with what Councilman Williams is addressing is, I believe the churches provide the volunteers to staff the thing, so, I mean, a business may have the space available, but then there's gonna become, even if it fits in the zoning and everything else, having, coming up with volunteers to staff it for the weekend, because I know that our churches looked at it, and unfortunately, we just don't have the people resources to, to handle it, but, I mean, my guess is that would be one of the, one of the bigger issues.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes, okay. Could you make sure I get your information before? Okay.
I did leave, I did leave our registers up in the basket.
All right, thank you.
Council, any other questions or comments? If not, we'll move on to motions. First motion is to cancel the January 1st, 2025 city council meeting, and a motion would be in order. Council, Councilmember Williams?
So moved.
A motion for approval from Councilmember Williams, Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Do we have any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have a motion to schedule the oath of office ceremony and reorganizational meeting for January 2nd, 2025 at 1:00 PM, and a motion would be in order. Councilmember Johnson?
So moved.
A motion for approval, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our final motion is a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, December 18th, 2024 at 4:00 PM, unless canceled by the mayor and city manager. Councilmember Fawcett?
Moved to approve.
Motion for approval from Councilmember Fawcett, Councilmember Bennett?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Bennett. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers this evening? And if so, please explain the guidelines.
We do have, uh, non-agenda speakers this evening. Each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government, and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of, out of order by the presiding officer, and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first non-agenda speaker is Jerry Boone Jr., 95 Byram Road, Gates, North Carolina, representing self-regarding Holy Neck Property Site. Is Mr. Boone present? Our next speaker is Miguel, Miguel Lopez, 303 Bullock Street, representing licensed and self-licensed contractors regarding enforcement efforts against unlicensed contractors, substandard work, and the creation of dangerous working conditions.
All right, thanks, guys. Whew, all right, so, I stand before you tonight.
Please, uh, give us your name and address.
Oh, yeah, my name's Miguel Lopez, 303 Bullock Street, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, I stand, uh, good evening, members of council, I stand before you tonight as a voice for every homeowner, every business owner, every family in this community who deserves to feel safe, protected in their investments. I also stand as a licensed contractor who follows rules, abides by the law, and believes in integrity. Unfortunately, um, this integrity is under attack, not just here in Suffolk, but across the entire Hampton Roads, Isle of Wight, everywhere, uh, in the nation, by unlicensed contractors who operate without regard for safety, ethics, and accountability. The Virginia Board of Contractors was established in the 1938 to ensure public safety, protect homeowners, and promote the ethical and competent delivery of construction services. Over the decades, it has become a cornerstone of trust and professionalism in the construction industry, requiring contractors to be licensed, insured, trained. The board has set a high standard for accountability. However, the good work of the Virginia Board is being undermined by those who choose to operate outside the law and cut corners and put lives at risk. Unlicensed contractors right now are a plague in this community, they deceive homeowners by playing a dangerous deception game. They sign exemption forms when applying for a business license to avoid the legal requirements of licensure, but when it suits them, they brandish that business license that has the word contractor at the bottom of it, to deceive homeowners, like, oh, wow, you are licensed, okay, let's move forward. But, um, uh, however, homeowners are lured into false sense of security, believing they are hiring professionals, only to find out, it's too late, that these individuals lack the skills, training, and insurance to get the job done safely or correctly. What are the consequences of this deception? They are devastating. Consider a few dangers we face daily, health risks. Imagine a contractor removing siding off of a wall that's infested with asbestos, and, without realizing it contains asbestos, this dangerous material is released into the air where it's unknowingly inhaled by a neighbor. The result, irreversible damage to their lungs, a lifelong health burden, and no accountability because the contractor didn't have the education or licensure to identify that risk. Safety valuations, roofing is one of the most hazardous trades in construction. Licensed contractors are required to complete, uh, safety examinations before getting their license, and prove their knowledge of fall protection per the specialty that in your license. Each contractor has bricks, painting, tree cutting, each contractor's license has their own specialty, and there's also RBCs, or you can do everything. Environmental harm, such as painting, painting's also another one. It seems simple, but even this trade requires contractor's license for a reason. An unlicensed painter sprays chemicals near a pond full of $20,000 koi fish. The overspray kills the fish, leaving the homeowner with no insurance coverage, no recovery fund, which when you use a licensed contractor in the state of Virginia, you will have 25,000 fund recovery for any funds lost. Community destruction, tree removal, a seemingly straightforward task, I mean, it's cutting a tree down, uh, it's another trade with licensed operators. Without the proper knowledge of cutting techniques, safety protocols, these contractors have caused fatal accidents, trees falling on homes, cars, even people. Economic undermining, unlicensed contractors not only risk lives, but also undercut legitimate businesses like mine. They use substandard materials bought at, um, liquidation warehouses, skip permit requirements, and often artificially low prices, forcing, forcing licensed contractors out of the market. This race to the bottom destroys trust in the industry and leaves homeowners paying the ultimate price. This is why we must act. Sting operations are proven solution in states like California, Florida, these operations have exposed and arrested hundreds of unlicensed contractors in a single sweep. These are not small-time offenders, they are individuals knowingly and willingly breaking the law, endangering lives, and undermining our economy. Sting operations are essential for five key reasons. They identify and expose bad actors. Unlicensed contractors are not operating in ignorance at all. When they respond to a sting operation, they are knowingly bidding on work, they are not qualified or licensed to perform. This is not about entrapment, it's about enforcement. They protect homeowners, sting operations protect homeowners, every time an unlicensed contractor is caught, a homeowner is saved from being victimized.
Excuse me, sir, your time has expired.
Okay. Have a good night, everyone. Any questions or anything?
Our next speaker is Tom Ryan, 119 Suffolk Meadows Boulevard, representing Citizens Voice regarding OTA 2023-007 regarding warehousing.
Good evening, everyone. Tom Ryan, 119 Suffolk Meadows Boulevard, Suffolk, Virginia. On November 15th, 2023, city council voted unanimously to approve ordinance OTA 2023-007 warehouses and warehousing. Citizens Voice was actively involved in those discussions with many of you leading up to that decision. We spoke on our concerns regarding the improper sighting of warehouses near residential areas and potential mitigation actions to minimize the negative impacts on our infrastructure, environment, and the health, safety, and quality of life of residents. Few of our recommendations were included in the final approved ordinance. The majority of the final OTA 2023-007 was a compilation of multiple zoning regulations that had already existed. Others, like the noise regulation, which was originally included, were completely removed from the final draft because it was deemed to be redundant with existing regulations. At the time, we were told that you, the city, needed to approve something because the warehouses were coming, and they are here, we know that. We were also told that there wasn't much M1 and M2 zone property not included in industrial parks, left in Suffolk, so our concerns really weren't that big of a problem. We disagree with you on that. During that meeting, Vice Mayor Ward asked the Director of Planning why Citizens Voice recommendations were not considered, and he was told the city was concerned with potential litigation based on regulatory takings related to the potential stricter regulations we recommended. We all know that's not correct. Realistic local zoning regulations that protect our infrastructure, environment, and citizens' health, safety, and quality of life are protected by both state and federal law. It was stated by multiple city council members at the same meeting that a working group, including citizens, needed to be established to continue to work on improving this ordinance to get it right, so we don't continue to deal with this in the future. Councilman Johnson commented that there's a lot of very knowledgeable citizens out there that probably know more about this than we do. It was also stated by various members of council that the approved OTA 2023-007 was just a start and could be amended at any time moving forward. The words of Councilman Williams were, this is a living, breathing document, and it's subject to change, it's just a start. Fast forward to today, warehouses, traffic, and land use concerns are the, are three of the top citizens' concerns we continue to hear every day. Mayor Duman actually stated such, stated as such the week of the election, he promised that addressing them would be one of his top priorities. One of the biggest citizens' concerns voiced regarding the 2045 comprehensive plan continues to be employment centers, primarily due to the understanding that they will essentially be filled with warehousing operations. During that discussion of the 2045 comprehensive plan last month, Councilman Johnson brought up the idea that he would like to see housing included in the employment centers, and this sentiment was echoed by Mayor Duman. But during the November 15th, 2023 city council meeting, Councilman Johnson clearly stated that warehousing and residential developments do not mix. His exact words were, you don't put neighborhoods with warehouses, the two don't go together. We agree, 100%. The worst fears of those of us who live off Sholder So Road were realized over the last few weeks, as a development of a 450,000 square foot warehouse started to take place in the middle of one of the most densely populated areas of our city. We all know that there are at least four more warehouses in the planning approval phase here, and many more M1, M2 acres at this site adjacent to residential housing will be built. If you haven't been up there in the last week or so, I encourage you to come up and see it for yourself. For those of us who live up there, it's a nightmare. For those of us who live up there, it's a nightmare. These massive warehouses do not belong next to residential communities, schools, healthcare facilities, professional offices, recreational areas, et cetera. They should be confined to clearly identified industrial centers such as North Gate Commerce Park. There are actions we need to take now to mitigate the impacts and developments of our residents. We do not, we are not here tonight to blame anyone, but to ask all of you to revisit OTA twenty twenty-three zero zero seven, just like you said, at that meeting on November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, that you said you would do it, and you haven't. We are, um, Citizens Voice has clear recommendations on what we feel can be done together legally and ethically to improve upon the work that's already been done here. And we're here to continue that discussion with you. Thank you very much.
Our final speaker is Sherry Bradford, twenty nineteen, Mead Parkway, representing the Western Tidewater Free Clinic regarding the clinic's operations and activities.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council and staff. My name is Sherry Bradford, and I serve as a board member of the Western Tidewater Free Clinic. And on behalf of our patients and the clinic, I want to express our sincere gratitude for your support of the clinic, and I want to share a brief update on what we're doing with the funds that you have gifted us, uh, for this year and the upcoming year. So for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, we, um, have received, uh, a gift from the city of three hundred thousand dollars, which we truly appreciate. This will enable us to provide comprehensive care for about two hundred and seven residents of the city of Suffolk. Over the course of the year, that equals about a thousand eight hundred and seventy-five medical visits. Your support is crucial in allowing us to continue to serve our high-risk patients, helping them avoid the need to seek care from local emergency departments, and every dollar donated is translated into nearly three times the amount in services provided, which is a significant return on investment. In the first six months of this year, Western Tidewater Free Clinic has assisted eight hundred and eighteen residents of the city of Suffolk through four thousand two hundred and sixty-one visits, which averages, averages about five visits, uh, per patient. This represents sixty-two percent of our total patient population. Additionally, the city of Suffolk residents have benefited from free medications valued, valued at over seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, and the comprehensive healthcare services worth more than seven hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars during this period. Since the opening of the clinic doors, we've provided over seven thousand seven hundred unique patients, accounting for more than two hundred and nineteen thousand medical, dental, mental health, and eligibility visits, as well as pharmacy consultations. In total, these patients have received over three hundred and twelve thousand free medications, uh, with the retail value exceeding fifty-nine million dollars. As you are aware, many of our patients, uh, face significant health challenges, uh, and multiple chronic conditions. Establishing a healthcare home is something that is very important to the clinic, and we appreciate your support of that. To improve the healthcare, um, quality and the quality of life of our patients, your support is significant, and the level of care would not be feasible without your support. For instance, a patient that we've given the name Wendy, uh, could be facing life-threatening health issues if not for your contributions. So Wendy is a sixty-four-year-old woman. She came to the clinic. Uh, she'd been feeling lost and overwhelmed by a complex medication regimen. She had been struggling with anxiety and depression for many years and felt neglected by her previous healthcare provider. Her health had declined to the point where she needed to retire and move in with a family member. After consulting with our medical director, Dr. Stephen Greer, and our mental health professionals, Wendy felt a remarkable change. For the first time, she felt truly supported. She was able to get her medications decreased, um, and with the support of the clinic, she was able to decrease her medications from over twenty to just, just down to seven, um, with three aimed at specifically her mental health needs. Since her time at the clinic, Wendy had experienced clarity, has experienced clarity, improvements in her well-being, and a direct quote from Wendy is, "Finding this place has been a blessing. It feels like home, and I haven't felt this good in years. I hold on to the hope that the progress I've made here will last, thanks to the supportive team at the clinic." So the financial backing of the city and our community enables to keep serving those in dire need within our two thousand two hundred square mile radius. We deeply appreciate your ongoing commitment, commitment to the mission of the clinic. Your support helps us create a health home for our patients, increase healthcare accessibility for everyone in our community, and promote better healthcare outcomes. Once again, thank you so much for your investment in the clinic. Uh, we would love to invite anyone in for a tour, so you're able to see the great work that's going on in the clinic. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
Can we now move to new business? Madam Clerk, do we have any additions to tonight's agenda?
We have one item for consideration this evening, a motion to nominate and appoint Edward Beardsley to the Downtown Advisory Commission as the retail representative.
Counsel, motion would be in order. Counselmember Rector?
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Counselmember Rector. Counselmember Fawcett?
Second his motion.
Second from Counselmember Fawcett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please, can you vote? Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by vote of eight to zero.
Uh, is there any new business that we require to action, City Council, that any members have this evening? Hearing none, we'll move to announcements and comments. In a distant time, I'll ask a median community relations director, Jennifer Moore, has any announcements?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, city manager. I'll kick off the announcements tonight with news from the Suffolk Police Department. They held a badge-pinning ceremony on December third, and the city welcomed sixteen new officers who have officially joined the Suffolk Police Department. Each officer will play a crucial role in the job of keeping our city safe day and night. Congratulations, officers. As well, the Suffolk Police Department is scheduled for a virtual assessment from the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, or CALEA, for their Emergency Communications Center. As part of the virtual assessment, the agency and members of the community are invited to offer comments to CALEA and their assessors regarding the Suffolk Police Department's policies and procedures, administration, operations, and support services. The portal will be open from January third through January eleventh and can be found on the Suffolk Police Department's website at sufficpd.com under the CALEA heading. And as the holiday season is upon us, Suffolk Parks and Recreation would like to remind residents of some holiday happenings that are held around the city. The Festival of Lights has officially kicked off at Sleepy Hole Park and will run through the end of the year. Limited hours are available now, but the lights will be on daily beginning December twelfth. Admission to the light, light show is free, and for a full listing of hours and other updates, visit sufficparksandrecs.com. And if the lights don't put you in the holiday spirit, maybe a little ice skating will. The Parks and Rec Department is excited to share that the ice skating rink is officially open Thursdays through Sundays at Festival Park. Skating session times will run for one hour each. Admission is five dollars per hour for those thirteen years or older. Children under twelve are free, but must be accompanied by an adult. For more information, visit sufficparksandrecs.com. And let's not forget about the annual holiday parade next Saturday, December fourteenth at seven P.M. Find the best spot to watch the floats, equestrian units, marching bands, and festive vehicles as they stroll down West Washington Street. This year's parade theme celebrates our fiftieth anniversary with silver and gold holiday wishes, and the grandstand will be located in front of the former SunTrust building. For more information, visit sufficparksandrecs.com. And the Suffolk Public Library is excited to announce that they are celebrating the Many Cultures of the African Diaspora with the Festival of Flags on December fourteenth, held at the North Suffolk Library from two to four P.M. Join us for the live music, playing steel drums, food, and a celebration of the Many Cultures. For more information, visit sufficpubliclibrary.com. And finally tonight, on your, excuse me, and finally tonight, the City of Suffolk Public Safety Committee would like to remind all citizens that the Public Safety Portal is online and available for comment. This online platform empowers our residents to share their suggestions on community safety improvements and public safety matters. Users of the portal will also have the option to submit anonymously. We do want to remind residents, however, that this portal is not intended for reporting criminal activity, and in the event of an emergency, to please dial nine one one. For more information on the Public Safety Committee and the portal, visit sufficva.us. Oh, and one more thing. We have received breaking news from the National Association of Town Watch regarding our national night out rankings. I am excited to share that Suffolk has entered a new population category, the second largest, which is the population category of one hundred to three hundred thousand residents. And being that we are new kids on the block in this category, I am proud to announce that Suffolk is ranked. Drumroll, please. Thank you very much. Tenth. Top ten. Top ten is quite the achievement right out of the gate, and as the Chair of the Suffolk National Night Out Committee, I am proud of us. So thank you to our community, our volunteers, our public safety officials for throwing one heck of a party this year, and we look forward to twenty twenty-five. And of course, on your screen are the various ways to stay connected to Suffolk. Thanks and have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Okay, we'll now move on to announcements from council, and let's start with Councilmember Rector.
There you go. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know it's getting very, very late, so I'll be brief. First off, I just want to hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. It's kind of a little unfortunate that after months and months of no rain, the one day that we had rain was Thanksgiving, but, um, I hope it didn't put a damper on anybody's ability to enjoy, enjoy the holiday. Chief, Chief Bowie, congratulations on the badge-pinning ceremony, sixteen officers. That's incredible. It, it was a privilege to be a part of it, and I hope, hope we have another one coming real soon. I did attend the opening of the New Realm Brewery. That is a fantastic addition to the landscape up there on Bridge Road. Thing seats three hundred people. I mean, between the downstairs bar, the upstairs bar, and, and the outside bar. So if you haven't been out there, you ought to go out there and just, just take a, take a look at it. The food that they have is excellent, and obviously the suds were pretty good, too. If you get an opportunity this weekend, um, participate in the holiday Christmas tour that's taking part downtown, where you get an opportunity to go through some of the historic homes and some of the churches that we have, um, downtown. The Grand Illumination was a great event. I think holding it at the Cultural Arts Center was, um, I don't know whose idea that was, but with being able to bring a lot of the activities inside, as cold and windy as it was that evening, um, it, it, I, I think it really helped, helped the night. And, um, congratulations, Jennifer, on the national night out, um, tenth in a whole new category that goes, I mean, we're, population-wise, right at the basement of that category, so to even rank it all, I think, is, uh, incredible. And I don't know whether all of Small Business Saturday was as successful as what was going on in Holland at, um, Lily's Consignment, but, uh, that was a really fascinating and, and well-attended, uh, event. And then, I guess, finally, I just hope everybody has a great holiday season. I know we got one more council meeting before that happens, but it's never too early to start getting ready for it. With that, I'll say good night.
Councilmember Butler-Barlow? We're going, we're going like this tonight. You like that? Uh-huh, got her.
You did? Touche.
Time's something new. I'm going there, 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 there.
That's okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Did I give everybody a headache?
I wanted to also say thank you, uh, thank you. Congratulations to sixteen new police officers pinned. That's excellent, um, and good news. Also, wanted to say, hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving holiday, and that, you know, we're in the holiday season. Um, there are so many wonderful things going on, the booklet that we got at the last meeting. I mean, you could be doing something all day, every day from now until New Year's, I think. So I hope everyone will take advantage of that and enjoy all the different, uh, activities that are being offered. Um, I want to shout out to my fellow farmers. Hopefully, your harvest is wrapping up. We are finished at our home place and, um, looking forward to a time of rest and planning. You know, you, you finish the one year, and then you start immediately planning for the next year. So, um, hope everyone had a, a safe and a productive harvest. I know that we've had a few fires, and that's always a concern, but nothing, um, nothing serious, which is great. And, um, I'll look forward to one more meeting in December, and, uh, with that, I'll say good night.
Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. To Chief Bowie, the, um, sixteen new officers, congratulations, great job. Also, on Saturday, November the twenty-third, I had my twenty-two, uh, twenty-second Annual Turkey Giveaway. Uh, we had over two hundred and three volunteers and was able to help over two thousand families with their Thanksgiving dinner. To my family, the LW Lawn Service staff, and to the volunteers, thank you so much for your continued help in making each year event successful, and I am looking forward to twenty twenty-five event. Got a little bad news. Um, I'd like to, um, take this opportunity to offer my condolences to, uh, Mr. John King and his family for their loss. Um, he lost his mother, and I want his family to know, um, that they are in my prayers during these difficult times. And with that, I'll say good night.
Councilmember Bennett?
Well, I'm gonna be very brief. I would just like to say congratulations on the two, uh, as the other councilmen, they said, on the sixteen new police officers. Our police department very young now, looking at all what we have there. Got a lot of young people, so I guess they have long careers ahead of them, so, uh, a lot of challenges, I guess, there with getting them up to speed with, uh, those young people. But it's great to see those young people that's taking interest in our city, and I want to just welcome them in. And, uh, I'd like to thank Cap for coming out and giving you information to us tonight, and we hope that we will continue to have a dialogue and do whatever we can to assist in any way we can. And, uh, I hope that everyone had a great Thanksgiving with the families, and, um, you know, this time of year, when we have holidays and the empty seat is at the table, it makes a difference. So we have to keep everyone in our prayers and thoughts when, uh, those holidays come because it's very hard on some families, and, um, I understand the feeling. So with that, I would say that, uh, we're looking forward to, uh, getting ready for Christmas. I think everybody's doing the shopping already, and, um, Amazon truck is running and stopping by the house just about every day. So, uh, I'm sure others are just about the same. But they're saying porch park, now you have to be careful with your packages being delivered, because some people was following the trucks around, picking them up as soon as they drop them off. So you need to make sure that you, uh, have someone looking after your, uh, packages as they're coming in, and hopefully that, uh, you'll be able to have a great, uh, holiday and get your families have a joyful get-together and enjoy each other. With that, I would say good evening.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. Jennifer, top ten, so this year, we need to set the game up so we get that top ten number down, right? We want to get way down. Okay. Also, uh, along with some of the other council members, uh, the New Realm Brewery up on Harborview is a great facility. It's gonna be great for some entertainment, some family entertainment. They'll have all kinds of stuff out there, cornhole, and you can bring your pets and all kinds of stuff there, and you can have a good old time, and the, the management there is great, and the, the people working there, food's good. Get a chance, go up and support them. Sometime in the next month or so, we'll probably have the new barbecue facility up on Bridge Road coming up and getting openings, so we should be hearing about that real soon. And, um, hopefully, uh, a lot of folks will really go in and crash his party because he needs a lot of support there. He's done a lot of work on that facility. Chief, sixteen new officers, you know, you're getting, you know, we talked about this, and your recruiting efforts out there, how you've been doing this recruiting has helped you a lot. This sixteen really brings that number down that you're trying to get to, to try to close the gap on the vacancies. So hopefully, we can keep them in here and incentivized and keep things going, and you got another recruiting coming up soon, right? March. So for all you that want to be, uh, law enforcement folks to help us out in Suffolk in March, look out. The chief will have some information out on that. See if you can come on back and, uh, get some more people. some more people. Your CALEA accreditation, good luck. I want you to continue that, that's a great accreditation program. And if you get a chance, go out to Sleepy Hole Park, it's kind of a festive time of year, ride through, you know, it's a great, great setup out there. Parks and Rec and all the folks have done a lot of work out there to make it look great for the season. Leading up to the Christmas holiday, it's time for everybody to rethink what's going on around them, be cautious about where you're at when you're out shopping, know your surroundings, don't go out in the dark areas when you're shopping. And if you would, like Mr. Bennett said, you know, if you're gonna have those packages lived on the front porch, you might want to find a way to get them up out of there, because they're snatching them up. I'm sure you've heard a lot of that, chief, from the community, so just beware. There's a different Santa Claus out there when your packages are sitting on the front porch. So anyway, I got to go over to Mr. Williams here, Councilman Williams, Turkey Event. It was a lot of people, it was a great event, as you do every year, and there's a lot to be said, and you think about how many families, as we talked about earlier, that may not have had something to eat, and what he has supplied for those families is monumental. In particular, with the groceries today, the prices, and people not having a lot, that's a, that's a big lift. So I thank you personally for your dedication in doing what you've done to be a part of that every year, since I've known you, you've been doing it. So just great. You mentioned John King, he's our sheriff, we're there in the Sheriff's Department, his mother passed, congratulations to the King family. And I want to, you know, thank to everybody coming out tonight, Cap, and all the participants that came out and spoke. It's always a pleasure to see folks come up and hear the stories and hear the things that we need to be doing and how we can help other folks. So continue to do that. We have one more meeting. I will have a very long last meeting. I have a lot to say in the last meeting, so if you're gonna come, plan on being here a while, because I'm gonna roll it out. I got some things to say to some of those people out there that have been in my back for a few years, I plan on airing it out. So come on out to the next meeting. Thank you very much, you have a good evening.
Counselmember Johnson.
First off, thank you, Mayor, for putting me at the end, so I don't need to say any of the stuff these other guys have already said. All I want to say is appreciate your neighbors, appreciate the people of this city, we are so blessed. Support the people that live here and work here, let's look after one another, and let's make sure nobody sleeps cold on the street. We do care too much in this city, so we need to make sure we look after one another. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Vice Mayor Ward.
Yeah, graduation, chief. I wasn't there but graduated on your pinning. At a certain age, I keep going to the doctor to see what's going on, so I appreciate, thank you for doing a good job, what you're doing. I'd like to give my apology to the Nazment Borough last meeting, I had so much on my plate, off my plate, and things I just didn't say, but I want to thank them for allowing me to represent them again four more years. I ran unopposed, but I got 4,700 votes, and I really appreciate that, and I don't take nothing for granted. And those who we meet and talk with, I think they believe what I say or believe what I say I can do and I cannot do. I'd like to thank you again, the Nazment Borough. Mr. Councilman Williams, you always, you know I always give you my advice on certain things, but your Turkey Giveaway is a well-oiled machine, I like to see it operate, and I have no complaints. And we do business with it, we're giving away people who is in need more than we know. Thank you. Keep it going for 23 years. Tyewater Western Clinic, I'm giving a thumbs up, because I think y'all do a great job. I really appreciate what y'all do with the money we give you, I think y'all do it a great, not only people suffer, all around. These three people need another announcement again. As you know, with the help of people in Suffolk, especially the mayor, who allows me to have not one vehicle but two vehicles when I went down there, I really appreciate, and he know I appreciate his help, how he helped me in this about six times, so thank you again, Mayor, for your support. Ms. Cynthia Stowall, Ms. Mary Novell, Ms. Carolyn Stovil. I hear some of you talking about Thanksgiving, but when you see people that don't have nothing but canned goods. When we went, when we arrived at North Carolina, they had about, we seen somebody picking up canned goods, food. So with the two trucks, we unloaded our supplies that the big city of Suffolk gave humanely to the people of Asheville, North Carolina, and I appreciate that so much, I really do. And it gets to me when I see the output that we do, we can be, we is a good city, and we can even be better. But I thank you so much for having trusted me to go to these places, and I'd like going, but I think, I don't know how many more I can do, because them rides are getting longer and longer. But I appreciate the city for all the help they give towards that event. I thank you so much, and the people of Asheville, thank you also. With that, I say God bless.
Okay, go ahead and wrap it up, but we had a little bit going on last, since our last meeting. Councilman Rector alluded to the ribbon-cutting at New Realm Brewery in Harborview, and the thing that stands out in my mind is some of these businesses that have chosen Suffolk over a lot of other localities. In this particular case, I mean, New Realm, I mean, they are in Virginia Beach, but they've got, they've also got operations in Atlanta and Charleston. So we think Atlanta, Charleston, Suffolk, you know, very seldom would those, anybody associate those cities in the same sentence. But that's, that's where, not where we're heading, that's where we are. It was the same way with Sojourn Fermentory. He said he considered Greensboro, he considered Richmond, and when he came to Suffolk, he knew right then that's where they wanted to be. So I'm very proud of the, where we've come, where we are as a city, the quality of life we have to offer. Now, along with that, has been some growing pains, obviously, that need to be addressed, and we're going to continue to address those to the best of our ability, but just like I said to Mr. Lewis earlier, when we were talking about '17, you know, all these initiatives are great, but somebody's going to show us the money. So we're going to keep working towards that locally, regionally, statewide, federal-wise, to obtain the funds that we can as expeditiously as possible to make, to make this happen, to be able to address these concerns. So just wanted to put that all into perspective, you know, the fact that people want to come to our city is not going to change, because our city's not going to go backwards. You know, when you look at the growth in Hampton Roads, I mean, I was looking at it the other day, just yesterday, I think it's the last 10 years, we've got 19%. There's only a couple other, none of the other cities are even close, except for Chesapeake, two have, two had negative numbers. So let's put it into perspective. Yes, it's a problem that we have an issue with, well, let me take it back. As I said before, it's not a problem, it's a challenge. A problem would be if nobody wants to come here, and we were a city with a negative migration, but the fact is that we aren't. So we're going to continue to work towards that. The Grand Illumination this year is at the Cultural Arts Center, it was great, we had a good turnout. It decided it'd been like 70 degrees all week, and then it turned to like 30, you know, just for the illumination, but everybody got in the Christmas spirit. And once again, you know, we talked, Councilman Johnson spoke about the citizens of Suffolk. I mean, this is another gathering of people that really reflects the type of citizens that do comprise our city. Councilman Williams, same thing, you know, Turkey Giveaway, I think there was a number 22 in 22, it was like 22,000 turkeys in 22 years, was that right? Something like that? I picked up on it, I mean, it's amazing, 22,000 turkeys, and folks lined up from Councilman Williams busy to under the, overpass, about 200 volunteers, and it speaks volumes, once again, from where we are. We had Congressman Scott there, we had Delegate Clark there, Nadarius, who else did we have? But, you know, we got, Senator Jordan was there, that's exactly right. So that's the type of good that we do in our city, and I thank you for everything you do there. The police badge-pinning, I know everybody's mentioned it, but this was, I mean, I've done a lot of police badge-pinnings over the last four years, this is probably the most memorable, because I don't remember ever seeing 16 recruits at one time, and I actually got the information the last time we had 16 was in 1999. So it's a pretty amazing statute. Another thing, the chief impressed upon everyone is that we don't settle in Suffolk. It's not about quantity, it's about quality. So to get those 16 recruits, we had several hundred applications that represented the top 3% of the applicants that were here. So whatever you're doing, keep doing it, and I understand we've got 10 more coming through that are off to, off to the academy. So, you know, we're getting there really quick, and I did want to notice, I don't know if there was a concerted effort to do so, but in the last week or so, I've seen several more patrol cars actually, you know, on the street looking for speed offenders in strategic areas, you know, one on Kings Fork Road before you got to the school zone, and I saw one on 58. And I think anything we can do to deter reckless speeding, because, I mean, it's, it's something that's happening all across the region. The Hampton Roads Plan and Transportation Organization, the report we got, reckless speeding, which is 20 miles per hour, over speeding was up 500% last year, 500%. And conversely, enforcement was down 50%. So what happens is we, we didn't actually have more accidents, but with the accidents we had, there were more fatalities, because the accidents were happening at 80 miles an hour, not 60 miles an hour. So it's significant, and I appreciate the efforts that you're doing there. National Night Out, I know it's, you know, you look at the number 10, and it's like, nah, we're 10, we've been one and two and three before, but you got to understand, we just got over to 100,000. And I think that category is 100,000 to 300,000, you know, that's a lot. I mean, I don't think we're going to be around, just so nobody gets excited, I think we're going to be stuck in this class for a little while. I don't think we're going over 300,000 anytime soon. But it's significant that our first time at barely over 100,000, we still came in number 10 in the nation, and I know we're going to work diligently to improve that next year and show them what it's about. So with that, my quote of the night, I know the election was about a month ago, but it was an election quote from our 26th president, who I like a lot of his quotes, and that's Teddy Roosevelt, one of my favorites, and that quote is, "A vote is like a rifle. Its usefulness extends, depends," it's not that late. "A vote is like a rifle, its usefulness depends upon the character of the user." So with that, I'll say good evening and ask for a motion to adjourn. Oh, we got, you want Teddy Roosevelt? Okay. There you go.
Mr. Maney, I would like for you to have the inspector, someone to take a look at Shoal Seale Road, where the development of the warehouses going, with the tree line, with the walking trail in the Bob White neighborhood, see if they are staying within the guidelines that they are supposed to be with leaving the tree line there buffalo. I'd appreciate it. That was, I was intending to mention that, and I forgot in my comments.
Vice Mayor Ward.
Yes, I just want to say that the three ladies are named, and also the members of Tabernacle Christian Church and Bishop Opel, thank you so much.
Counselmember Fawcett.
Move for approval.
Oh, there we go, yeah, we got, we got off track there, didn't we? I thought, I thought we were starting a new motion here. Okay, thank you. We got a motion for adjournment from Counselmember Fawcett, and we will call on Counselmember Johnson.
Second that motion.
For a second, do we have any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.